Everybody please stand. Councilman Cox, who directed my main session, may stand and then Councilor Charles will lead the place, leave it. From Cox.
I'm definitely following you. Thank you, Lord, for calling us together here tonight, Lord. We hope that everything sitting down here tonight will be pleasing in your sight, Lord, for the fulfillment of your kingdom here on this earth, Lord, in the city of Darien, and for making the city become the beacon of light that needs to be on the hill, Lord, shining for all of us to see and then make them envy us, Lord, because we are pulled together so well and try and represent you in everything that we do. Please guide us in everything that we say and do here tonight, Lord, and may it be in your sight. Please send us, in the word of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I want to thank you everybody for coming, showing your support, your concern for everything that's going on in the city. I do encourage you to attend the workshops prior to the meetings also. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item on agenda is local. Everybody's present. Appreciate y'all being here tonight. Next item would be approval of the agendas. Everybody's had a chance, opportunity to look over the agenda. Do I hear a motion? It will be accepted as printed. So, second, have a motion and second, any discussions? The only discussions is, let me see if somebody made a motion, under unfinished business, item number five, eight. We need to add the appointment of the DDA members. We can do three or four things, City Attorney, we can add three or four things at one time?
Yes.
One motion?
Okay.
The other thing we talked about last night was City Manager Davis Brody, I've changed him. Also under number six, new business, item C. That needs to be changed to consider the police assistance with code enforcement. Is that the way it's supposed to go?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And those ones are down. Out of under number six, new business, out of E, update for the drainage committee. And that committee is Councilman Lawson and Councilman Skene. Do I hear a motion? That has those two agendas. Motion. Okay, a motion by, no, we gotta, okay. Let's take it. We don't have any motion on that, but we can, we've done the first motion. Would you change your motion to approval of the agenda with the amendment? Hold on, okay. And your second, yours?
I'm second, ma'am.
Okay, with you.
May go well.
Okay. Any more discussion? Any discussion? All favoriters right hand. Oh, same. Okay, same. Agenda accepted with those changes. And I do have an extra time for somebody to use.
That one's the amended one.
Ma'am?
That's the amended one.
That's the one that all the changes there.
Okay, it's already got one.
Yeah.
Okay, we didn't have it, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, next one would be approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. That's the May 16th court session, also the May 17th regular meeting. Do I hear a motion that we approved the minutes?
Make the motion and approve as read, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion, Councilman Cox, do I hear a second?
My second.
Second by Councilman Skene, any discussion? There is one change that needs to be, it's no major. I think Councilman Cox pointed out to us last night on the first page. Actually, it's the first paragraph where it's got, okay, it's been amended, so.
It's been amended.
Okay, so it's got to do with that amendment. I didn't know it was amended.
It'll be corrected.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor is right hand. Oh, same security, thank you. Next item would be, we have no public hearings? Am I correct, City Mayor?
Yes, sir. Of course.
Okay, next would be visitor presentation. When you come forward, ask you to put such your name, your address, and try to explain to the participants if you can, for time's sake. First one would be Ms. Alberta Mayberry. We're gonna turn these in if y'all make it a little plain of what we're going to discuss or give us time to research things. That way we don't have to tell you, we'll check on and get back with you. This is on waste management, input, City Manager, and town hall meeting.
My name is Alberta Mayberry, and my physical address is 701 Brantown Street. And I'm here today to talk about waste management. Last month, I tried to get on the county commissioners' agenda, and they refused me. And they refused, they didn't answer any of my telephone calls. And since I'm paying both taxes, I said, "I'll come to the city."
You're saying?
What they're doing is, they're not putting the garbage bills back. When they move it, they leave it in the street or on the sidewalk. And I have called them four times already, and I've complained to them. I've complained to the driver, and he tells me that, before they came, that I had to take the garbage to the dump myself. And I told him, "I never had to do that." And even if I did, there's no reason for them to leave the tail on the sidewalk or in the street.
You're supposed to push it right beside the sidewalk and not on the sidewalk.
Well, they leave it in the street or on the sidewalk. And it's right there, the curb is right there. So all they have to do is put it back where they got it.
I gotta have a meeting with the main supervisor, district supervisor, and I'll mention that to him also.
Yes, because it's really terrible.
Get it out of the driveway. Okay.
And the other thing is.
But now, wait a minute, when I'm talking to you, I'm not sure we all were clear.
Okay.
You said they're not putting it back, or they're putting it back to where they got it? You dragged it out the sidewalk, they dump it, and they leave it?
It's right on the curb.
So you never moved it, you just stayed right there and then?
Yes.
Okay.
It's right there.
Okay.
So there's nothing for them to have to say that we have to drag it, in fact.
Oh, yeah, but you put it back in.
Okay, I'll get my shirt.
And that's what I've asked, and I've called them four times, and no response.
Okay. I'll get my shirt, are they done? Ah, way off.
Where they get it up, where they figure out that.
Okay, and your next was input on the City Manager?
Yes, because at one of the meetings, you had said that you were going to be having some town hall meetings so that the public could have an input into, you know, helping to make a selection and putting input into what we would like to see, you know, in our City Manager.
Now, ma'am, that has to be done in an executive session, correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney, City Manager, but that has to basically be done in an executive session under personnel matters. And we do it, now, we did have a town hall meeting, but that was on the West Side Park.
Yeah, but like I said, but you did say that you were going to be having a town hall meeting so that the public could have some input, yes?
If anybody remembers me saying that, I mean, I'm getting up here, I'm forgetting, but if I did, you know, I apologize. The only thing I can remember, and I'll check the minutes to make sure, is that the only town hall we had was for the West Side Park, when now it's called Veterans Memorial Park, but.
Right, well, is that the only kind of a town hall meeting you're gonna be having?
Yes, sir.
I mean, when do we, when do we, as citizens, get a chance to, you know, have some input into, you know, what's going on in our city?
Again, I asked our City Man, our Attorney to correct me, but my understanding is that the only input is you give one of us and speak to us about it, what you would like to see. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor? Yep.
So, Ms. Mayberry, and to the general public, I agree with you. We need to have a few more town hall meetings. The police chief and the sheriff, we had a town hall meeting. And it was so informative, and a lot of paranoia in the beginning, but when the meeting was over, the mayor was there, and it turned out to be a very delightful meeting. So I agree we need to have more town hall meetings. One thing the city has set up, and I'm grateful, is that each Monday before our regular meeting, and it's pretty liberal, anyone can come in and sign in. And so far, we have not denied anyone. People can come in and talk about this, about anything that we'd like to talk about, anything dealing with the powers of the city. And sometimes people come in and talk about things that we have no control over, but at least they come and find out that, "Oh, we can't do that." So that Monday, which I know you're quite familiar with, is similar to a town hall. And I do agree, we need to have more town halls, but every Monday before our Tuesday meeting, you sign up and you can talk about just about anything.
You know, I made the comment over and over, maybe last night, if you've got a problem that you want to address with the City Council, more than welcome to get on the city agenda to speak to me. But if you'll come to the workshop, we can get more detailed into our discussions, and it allows the general public to be able to take part also. We had some pretty good discussions last night.
Well, that's because, like I said, you know, we only have three minutes when we come up here. You can make this, you know.
We've been pretty good, we've been pretty good, not holding too long.
I know, but at the same time, there's so many things, you know what I'm saying? Because I brought up several issues about the digits, I never heard any more about that.
See, on Monday nights, pretty much all the time.
And that's why we said we need to have those town hall meetings where these things can come out. Or we'll have more time, you know, to come in and.
Well, workshop, workshop is just as good, that way we don't have to have an extra meeting a month. If you'll come to the workshop, and we pretty much, I know Ms. Julie was there last night, she, we can ask five, six questions, and we had a great discussion with her and some others, but. I invite you to come to the workshop on Monday before the meeting, without any problems.
So when we come to the workshop, we have to sign up, just like we do in front of the door?
You just sign at the door? When you come in, you sign at the door? And that can let us know you want to speak? And I usually call and ask if anybody else decided they want to speak, so.
And then with interaction, the council end up in the.
But far as input on the City Manager, we can't have it. I mean, that there, you can talk to each and every one of us and let us know what you'd like to see in a City Manager, and we'll take that and do the discussion with you. Or you can write, best to write it out, hand it to us.
So make them want to do this, I'll start coming to the workshop.
Thank you, ma'am. I encourage everybody to come to the workshop, so we can get some pretty good discussions. Okay, the next one is, well, actually, that was local, town hall meeting.
Yes, it was.
Waste management.
Input and engagement in the town hall meetings.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, thank you very much, and I hope and pray that, you know, that we're gonna have more input into what's going on here, because I feel that we're left out. And we need it back.
We've had a lady show up kind of late and ask if she can speak about neighborhood owner. We're working on getting that straightened out last night, so that worked out real good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, the next one is Ms. Julie Sal, Makintosh Beautiful. It's a new program to assist property owners to remove dilapidated abandoned buildings and adopt a highway program. When I went to, we had our last month's City Council meeting, I left here and went straight out to Ashen Village to keep Makintosh Beautiful meeting. They were talking about this, and I asked her if you know, kind of, come enlighten us on this. But thanks, great deals.
Well, yes, I'm Julie Sal, and the director of Keep Makintosh Beautiful. I've been doing this about five months now. And I'm happy to be here today because I've already done a presentation for the county commission. And I think it's, the advantage of being here too is to make sure that people in Darien understand that Keep Makintosh Beautiful just says "Makintosh." People sometimes interpret that as just serving the county outside of Darien. And I just want to take the opportunity to say that all of our service and all of our programs are for citizens in Darien as well as Makintosh County, not just a county organization. Basically, this program, this new abandoned buildings program, is intended to help people who have an abandoned building, an unlived-in, unlivable, falling-down building, or mobile home on empty, and would like or need some assistance removing them. And we have specific things that we provide through this program for all projects, and then perhaps some additional or different help depending on the scope of the project itself. In general, what we're providing is a dumpster to accept all the debris for demolition. We'll provide plastic bags, trash bags, for putting the smaller things in. The owner is mostly responsible for the labor of the demolition and the site cleanup. And then once all the building has been demolished, then we will pay for taking that to the landfill and disposing it out. Maybe that, at our discretion, we can help somewhat with the labor, get through volunteer. You know, that's sort of negotiable, but in general, the owner will be responsible for the labor of taking this building down. To start the process, we have an application. And those applications are available at the county zoning office currently, and also on the Keep Makintosh Beautiful website for download. And we encourage all of you, if you know someone who might benefit from this service, please recommend us to them, and we would love to talk to them about whether we can be of service to them. The other program I'd like to talk about is our, we currently have an adoptive highway program which, in which people, you don't have to be a member of Keep Makintosh Beautiful, anybody can do it. We encourage lots of people to do it. Just adopt a mile of a public roadway and keep that clean during the year. Four times a year, you do a pickup, or more often if you would like. And we want to expand that program to include parts and adopt a spot. You know, there may be some seating place, a cemetery, something else that people would like to adopt and keep clean, perhaps do some improvements there. So in our talks last night, I appreciate your support for that idea. And I hope to get back with you with some parts or some spots that people would like to adopt in the city and help you with that. And I want to just say that also through our discussions last night, which I found very helpful, it's clear that the program, the adopted, the abandoned building program will work the same if you're in the county or you're in the city. So as it stands now, there's an information sheet with the application, and that will be the same whether you're in the city or the county. I'm just glad to see that that wouldn't be any difference there. So I'd like to thank you again for your support for that. And in a few months, I hope to come back and let you know how things are going. It is, we hope it will be successful, but so far, we don't have any experience yet, but I look forward to being able to tell you that we have some folks that have taken advantage of that. Thanks very much.
We appreciate everything that, if people do it now, and we went through some pretty decent discussion last night, we also appreciate everything you do, any more.
Ms. Julie, try to come next month and give us another page if you would. This is something that's very important to, I believe, all of us up here and to Keep Makintosh Beautiful. And if we stay on top of this, and with the code enforcement, what we're discussing, I think it goes hand in hand. And if you could come back next month, that would be fantastic.
Is there a local number, not a private number, a local number of cases people would like to call either to adopt or may need your services?
There is, the number on the form is the Keep Makintosh Beautiful number.
What number is that? I'm trying to guess because I gotta tell you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Give me a chance.
Yes, that number is, excuse me.
437.
No, it's actually.
On the phone? 912, say it again?
Uh-huh, 912-289-1083.
1083.
You can also email, you can also email me at keepmakintoshbeautiful@gmail.com, and I will respond to that. That number, even though it's not a local number, it'll go to my cell phone, and I'll be happy to get back. And I'm happy to report that we, since presenting this at the county commission meeting, I've had several calls, so I'm very encouraged by that, that this will be successful, so.
That was my question to ask you, if we had any.
Yes, so we're hoping to help individual owners, but also help our county be more beautiful through this program. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next, Ms. Martha Rodd. Yes, sir.
May I have a little, uh?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, City Attorney, and City Manager, thank you for your time. My name is Michael Higgins. I live at 304th Street. I'm here today to talk about trees. I was transferred here back in 1997, in Charleston, to Nansah, Port-au-Prince. Less operations, as shore captain or Andrew. One of the things that made me choose Darien was the beauty of its town itself. One of the things that made up that beauty was your tree canopy. You diligently put together over the years certain tree programs. The last one, I think, was back in 2001. Then there was a denton made in 2008. But a committee that serves on the tree committee now has not been heard from, I think, and the Brethren can back me up on this, I think, since 2008, I think was the last time y'all heard from them. But now towards that, would there be a possibility of making additions to their beauty that represent District One and District Two? So that all districts inside the city are represented, because there are certain issues. Trees, as they are beautiful, they also have problems from time to time, and they need to be addressed. They just can't be arroyoing the other kind of thing. Let me cut this straight down, or that, don't you, this tree isn't doing well. You're not a tree, you're not an arborist, so you don't know. And that's probably some of the items that they made to the tree program you have. But just proposing, just thank you for your time. If you could allow for addition to the committee to be made, and in the future, moving forward, that committee will put forth additions to the tree program you have.
I think back in 2013 or 14, I set up, set up the tree advisory board.
Okay.
And we do have Arthur Plon with Georgia Forestry on that board. And we are a tree city, a certified tree city of Georgia. And we do participate in Arbor Day every day, since we are Arbor Day certified also. But we do have a certified.
Arborist?
Arborist on the onboard, but.
Okay, good.
And when we plant the new oak trees and all, he comes out and inspects everything and all.
Good.
Now, the oak tree on this side, we got a bad tree, and so they're checking it out now, finding out the problem, and I guess if we get it, we can.
Mike, are you asking to be on the tree committee?
No.
You want to be on the board?
Well, I mean, this is something, I've been here since March, and I haven't heard from committee. Who is.
See, we, the way we set that up, that was the mayor board, actually. But the way I set that board up, if someone has a problem with the tree, and they think the tree is unsafe, instead of us, City Manager, or somebody just saying, "Okay, go ahead and cut it down," we turn it over to the tree advisory board. They check it out, and they get other people to come in, and they check it out, and then they bring all their findings back to us, in a timely manner, of course. Now, if it's something that's just hanging and look like it's falling, of course, you know, we gotta make it safety of our people, but if you want to be on that board, I gotta open it and I can.
Can I comment, since you mentioned my name?
Yes, sir.
Might be a little, the historical society, we have one, actually, meetings that y'all did in Darien. They have not been meeting, and we have the county historical, so you may have been mentioning that. Our free committee, it is a free committee, and it was in 2008, 2013. And that is, according to our charter, is so discretionary, the mayor gives us a privilege, but according to the charter, is, the mayor has the power to appoint, but he shares that with the commission. So if you know people that would like to do some of the things that you're talking about, just have them to contact the mayor, and then we can go from there.
Okay, because a maestro on some trees have disappeared, and under 1/3. Why?
The tree advisory board, I think, everything runs through the City Manager, and he runs point to Wayne.
Yep.
And Wayne gets in touch with the tree advisory board whenever there's a question.
So we call Ms. Gaddis, that's the one that is the chairperson of that board?
She is, Mr. Mayor, unless I'm mistaken, she may have moved out of the county. She may have.
She's in the county, she's still on the board.
She sold her house in here in the city.
She's still on the board.
She would like it for you to do that.
She's still on the board, yeah.
See, was she still qualified to be on the board? She's not a resident of the city.
Well, when I set it up, I checked into that, and didn't have to be a resident.
So maybe Gaddis is the sheriff.
But you're good, I appreciate it.
Now, are you talking about, I heard you, when we're, I think you're talking about when somebody's cutting a tree down in their yard, or?
Yeah, because you just can't make an arbitrary decision on a tree being cut down. Why? Should be as, why is it diseased? There has to be a requisite, and your policy outlines that criteria that must be to destroy a tree. And obviously, that wasn't the case in my struggle, so I'm just saying, you pass it.
Deedsman issues, we got something over, but private property, we don't, we can't tell them what they can and can't.
They're on the same property.
Okay, and if somebody got a tree on city property, call the chief hours office and.
Call the City Manager.
You have to do it quick, because when the chainsaw starts, it's hard to stop.
It's harder to kill them, they probably asked them to stop.
If they call the City Manager, they always can get them stopped.
Yeah.
They're bad to her.
If you see them cutting one of our beautiful oak, stop them and.
Exactly, and you can't just make it your tree, so these cities are hundreds of years old. It's very old. Anyways, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate your time and your concern, but if you decide later on you want to be on that tree board, I'll do that, no problem.
Thank you, Sam.
Appreciate it, thank you, sir. Okay, next item. Okay, no, okay, unfinished, the item. Eight, and this is the appointed DDA board members. We did advertise for them, there was names turned in, what we did was turn those names over to the DDA board.
Mayor, this may be something appropriate for us to talk about in the executive session, before we make the final vote on that.
Okay.
Some issues on that.
Okay, so we want to table this to, to have it be an executive session.
And that's appropriate, it's a point, I respect.
Okay, thank you, sir. So we want to table that one, so we hand that one, we come out of the executive session.
And for the public, Mr. Mayor, do let them know what those acronyms are.
Thank you.
Downtown Development, that's our downtown development. We don't have a Better Home Town Board anymore, but we have the Downtown Development. Okay, next item would be new business. I've set a resolution 1A to adopt the fiscal year 2017 annual budget. I do appreciate City Manager and the City Council giving up Saturday morning to get together and work this out, and the City Manager done, along with the ones that also that helped him. I'm sure he had people helping with, but they done, coming, his team done a great job. I would want to thank them on that. Do I hear a motion that we accept the, approve the 2017 annual budget? Do I hear a motion that we approved the two thousand and seventeen fish?
Or we can do it without them.
We got something out of our county.
Well, we have to get them to, Mr. Mayor, we have to get them to start enforcement. Yeah. That's the biggest thing. Uh, it doesn't take a whole bunch. As you see, it doesn't take a whole bunch.
And it is, this is something we're working on with, uh, we have several meetings with the Coastal Regional Commission and with the county commissioners and all. We're working on, uh, I've got that big word to use, strategic, uh, planning. In other words-
Use a little word.
What we're working on doing is, uh- We're looking at the, uh, the services that's been duplicated and seeing, instead of having two different departments working the same thing, see if we can merge together.
Can I comment, just?
Yes, sir.
When you get involved in the code enforcement, I, I hope that we would consider, uh, like this beautiful, of course, and, uh, county code enforcement. The reason why I'm saying that, it, it is one thing to see a, a home that's, might need some repairs, and I'm saying this from a qualified standpoint. I've seen, uh, property that were recommendation by the city, uh, to destroy. And I've seen some like eighty percent worse that did not get the same type. So when we do it, even with the law enforcement, I think we really need to have experienced people knowing how to, to deal with this. Uh, this could, I mean, for some families, this could send them, this could, this could really, they could lose their property, move out of town, and it could create a lot of havoc. So I think when you do, we need to make sure, when you validate the code and bam, I think we need to, to work with many angles as we can. And yes, there are some that really need to be taken care of. And what I'm saying is be cautious and make sure that you just don't pick one person and leave another, and you're gonna have to blanket, uh, the whole city when you do that. Because if you do one person and they look across to the nation and nothing's there, and I'm talking what I've seen, not what I've heard, so be careful, and that's all I can say as being a lawyer.
Well, Mr. Watson, I, I, I agree with you. We have to be fair, but it, I, I do believe that our officers are well-equipped to, and, and I don't believe they'll be biased in it, but we have to do something, you know? And I'm not talking about people that don't clean up their yard or trash clothes and, you know, if you, you turned a boat upside down five years ago, the fiberglass and you can't find it, you've got issues. So it, it, there's a point in time that we need to take a stand and start cleaning this city up. And if we let the citizen know that we're gonna be serious and the police are going to do, then I think you'll see, it'd go a lot easier and, and you'll see this cl- city cleaned up, I hope.
Any more discussion?
I'm thinking it's time to do the cleanup too, but uniformity, like, uh, Councilman Watson's saying, you can't pick and choose, you have to, have to use the same umbrella for everyone. But if you got five cars in your yard, like Councilman Skeen's saying, and three of them done one and two of them don't have wheels, it's time to do something about it.
Yeah, I'd like me to, I was gonna echo one, Councilman Watson, uh, because it should be like a gray area, you know, um, that everybody goes by like a standard so that, like you said, one doesn't go over the other.
Police get it all, it will be, it will be done in one time, in one day.
Okay.
To address Mr. Watson's comments earlier, Councilman Watson's comment, Councilman Watson, before, in the past, before summonments was issued on these type things, there were multiple steps taken, uh, prior to the issuance of the summons. So they, they don't rush right out and do the summons. There, there are several going back and forth and talking to them. So I don't think anybody wants to punish somebody simply because they have a lack of money and they can't afford to clean it up. And sometimes that's the case, they're going as fast as they can. They just don't have the money to hire a big crew to come in and clean everything up. And as long as they were seeing progress in the past, they didn't issue any summons.
That's what I was gonna ask you, if they were seeing progress, would they help them get that?
That, that's right, as long as they're seeing progress, that's correct.
As far as enforcement, I think it's all spelled out in our code of ordinance is, uh, what you can do, can't do.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any more discussion? This Chief, you have a comment? Okay, next item, I think it's gonna fall on, I don't intend it to be written out that way because we can't do that, but, uh, one that fall on, city attorney does gonna fall under the, is a concession, also to negotiate with the city manager.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to speak.
Can't negotiate one if we don't have one.
Um, okay, can't negotiate one if we don't have one. I'd like to make a motion that we bring forward, uh, Mr. Paul Christian is the new city manager, um, bring him forward and, uh, second part, that's the first part of my motion, we're bringing forward Mr. Paul Christian for the new city manager. Second part of my motion will be to ask the council to approve for, um, the city attorney and myself to enter into contract negotiations with Mr. Christian to bring forward, um, for, uh, uh, the council approval after we get a contract together, for approval by the whole council at that point in time. But I do ask that we move forward with calling him and moving him forward and establishing a contract, right, establish a contract and move forward, the parameters of which we will set an executive session and then go forward for that. And that is in the form of a motion, Mr. Mayor, so I ask for you.
I have a motion by Councilman Cox to bring forward Mr. Paul Christian, do I hear a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, I have a second. Now, discussion, I have one. I asked last night for, uh, all council members to bring forth, uh, to look through the applications or the resumes we have turned in, everybody to bring forth one. I think that we should, everybody get together to the one that you brought forth and let's look through three or four of them before we just pick one.
Mr. Mayor, I think we've already got a motion and a second one before we have packed on that. Your opinion is well-intended, I appreciate it.
Okay, may I say something, Mr. Cox, before we come into the thing? You know, speaking with, with Archie, he asked me to take a good look at these applications and to talk to these people. Um, and what I did is I did that. I took his advice and, uh, I met with Mr. Christian and I also spoke at length with Mr. Smith. The-
What about Mr. Hamilton?
Mr. Hamilton, I did not speak for.
But there was thoughts of, of-
Right. But with, with that, I just wanted to let you know that I, out of the two, Mr. Christian stood out.
It's all mine. I'm sorry. As far as Mr. Hamilton, there was a problem I had with him as a little jockey after reviewing his application and everybody I hope had a chance to look at it. He hasn't been anywhere longer than a year.
We don't want to get into the-
That's what I'm saying, when you talk about that in executive session, I just like to see my motion in a second.
Sometimes, uh, Mr. Christian did out there, so I might get into it another.
All right.
Move on to motion in a second. Okay, I have a motion, it's second, we're still in discussion for all of it. I, I wasn't aware that we had already narrowed it down to one person myself, so you got a special?
Yes, uh, Mr. Cox, uh, I'm gonna be clear on your motion. I've got, Mr. Paul Christian, when you say negotiate, you particularly mentioned you and the attorney. I know we did that in, in phase one, and I thought I heard you, and I think I heard you right, that, that you all, whoever we select as, as manager, during the negotiating period, that you and attorney, um, discuss those matters, but the final decision will be decided amongst the mayor and council, is that what I'm saying?
Correct, so yes, the whole contract, once we get one together, we'll be rolling for council.
Whoever that might be.
We want to do it for, 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 you can, under form.
Well, after, I'm almost, I just want to be clear, I know you say negotiation, and I don't have a problem because, with, with the second part, because I was the one to say, rather than all of us worrying how the attorney, that you be the key point. I'm just saying that, uh, I just want to make sure that you guys won't be making the, finding the decision.
No, sir.
We're just gonna help draw the contract, bring forward whoever it is, and then the council, the mayor and council, they, in that negotiating period.
That would have to be the case, Mr. Paul.
All right.
Okay, any more discussion?
Yes, um, so the contract is gonna be drawn up, it's gonna go for any, any of the, um, candidates?
Nope, this is voted here, this one, Paul Christian, for Mr. Christian.
And, may I ask it? Now, that means we bring in to start negotiating. It does not mean anything other than to negotiate.
I think we should-
We're gonna draw a contract presented to the councils.
Well, let's see if they'll pass this. Let's see if we-
We can talk about that in the executive session if you like.
I think we should have brought in three or four, in the gathering. But anyway, motion has been made, that's signed on, uh-
Mr. Mayor.
Bringing in Paul Christian, attorney.
Yes, sir, Mayor, I, I believe in response to, I think I know what Councilman Skeen's getting at, and I, I think Councilman Watson a little bit too earlier. This vote would not necessarily tire this person because the negotiations may fall through, uh, and the-
But it's just for him.
It's subject to the mayor and council.
But it's just for him and not any-
Ending contract, all ending contract.
Ending, ending contract approval by the mayor and council, that's right.
He's the candidate for bringing forward this time.
Okay, uh, motion's been made, statement made to offer this, uh, negotiation all to Paul Christian. I'm gonna do a roll call on this one. Uh, we start with Mr. Cox. Uh, yay.
Skeen?
Yeah.
Michelle?
May.
What's the count?
I got, uh, two yays, one Michelle's a nay.
Who's, who's the names?
Michelle's a nay.
Who said yes?
Councilman Skeen said yes, Councilman Cox said yes, Councilor Shaw said nay.
I'm gonna vote yes.
I'm gonna let it go out, and I, even though it's gonna pass in majority, I don't think, I would say nay, as my partner tells, I don't think it should have been narrowed from the whole pool down to just one name. It should have been narrowed from the whole pool down to three or four names and then one picked out of those three or four names. And I think that, I would appreciate if I had it been consulted and this, instead of over my head.
It's not like some backtable stuff, anyway.
Mr. Mayor, being that the mayor spoke out of order, can I speak out of order also? There was vote and there was continued discussion. Um, Mr. Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to put you on, let me, no, don't do that, just allow me to talk. All of us knew just about most of the people that put in, whether we knew them personally or not. Some of the names has been floating around. Cameron's a rogue. I want to be clear, everybody at this table, perhaps the attorney, knew about many of the names. I won't mention those names, because only Mr. Paul Christian, but I want to be clear, everybody at this table knew or heard about Mr. Paul Christian. I want to be clear on that. I said one more time, everybody, everybody. The person that knew him the most, I believe, was Mr. John Cox. This was a tough vote for me, very tough vote for me, that I want to be able to sleep at night. My man go long after I'm in office. And if you've been here for a while, my colleague, uh, uh, Mr. John Cox and I don't agree on big issues about seventy-five percent of the time. We almost had on our harmonizing boxing gloves a few times. But we agree on this point, what we believe is better for the city, long after I'm gone. And let's face it, as our attorney tell us, this may not even pan out. Then we'll be right back here again, voting for the next best qualified, and I'm already known some individuals that I've already looked over, Mr. Mayor, I would vote for, I'm just being honest. I don't know how this is gonna pan out.
That's why I wish it would have been narrowed down to three or four instead of just one.
Did you have a preference on the ones that you looked at, Mayor? Because if you did, I mean, you-
I mean, I like, I like-
Or-
Yeah, there was, there was about three in there that I really liked.
My problem is, okay, my problem is, it was narrowed down from the whole pool to just one, instead of the whole pool down to three or four.
Now, this man, I want, we gotta ask this man, well, you want my first choice before you say again.
Well, I wouldn't think you would say that.
Well, that's what it's gonna look to him.
I hope you wouldn't say that you're my second choice. I hope that wasn't said.
That's the way it's gonna look to him, though. Instead of us taking it down to three or four, we carried it down to just one. Okay, uh, vote's over with, that was done. Next on our item on our business is update from the drainage committee, uh, we'll ask our drainage committee to update us on that.
Our lead and Mr. Skeen has a new kid on the block, so he's working super hard. Uh, the drain committee and working along with, uh, uh, Mayor Archie, we have a lot of problems. Uh, every time I see Ms. Kathleen sitting out there, I always think of Ms. Jeanette. Uh, she has a serious problem too, that's water comes in her yard. That's one of our very fine businesses, Mr. Skeen is gonna take over from there. Uh, the drainage committee, we try to go to every spot that anybody complains about in the city. And I fought, not literally Morgasins, but going in drains, ditches, I mean, every inch of this city with every sector, we've been in all of the rough spots. And, uh, we forward some of that to Mr. Skeen, so he has one here that, that we hope we can do something to, hopefully in the near future, I'll start, Mr. Skeen.
This, this is, um, these are some pictures of the, uh, Darien funeral home. And I don't know if, um, if all y'all, I don't mind passing them around, but as you see, this is his business, who is he, that's Mr. Nathan Gilbert at the Darien funeral home. His business is here and you see the floodwater, it's, it's in his building and you can pass that down. I think that Mr. Gilbert has come before the council, I, I'm not-
His, his methods individually, I don't know.
And, and this is something that's been going on, I, I thought he told me over two years, but, um-
Long time.
A long time. And yet, we say it's a simple fix, an easy fix, but it hasn't been fixed. And, um, there was, you, you mentioned something about gravity flow, which was a easy, I mean, if it's that easy, why hasn't it been missed?
Well, that particular one there, we discussed last night, um, we've already got a remedy for that one. The, there's a drainage ditch over behind the funeral home, but Dr. Bodmer, who owns the property, joined into it, he has gave, given us now permission to go in and dig, so now we just gotta get the time set up and get everything lined up and dig the drains out, and I should take care of that problem.
And when would these pictures-
So I can-
We'll try that, we'll try to, to do that. When would those pictures taken, after which rain?
This is, yeah.
The last, the last kind of rain you had?
I don't think it, no, I've had these for about three weeks, so.
How much rain was that? Was that when we had it?
When we had that big?
It was a lot. What happens is like New Orleans, almost. It's, the rain, it comes here, unfortunately, it's in the right spot where the rain comes in.
The road and everything is kind of built down towards you. Okay, any more discussion? I appreciate the work that y'all doing on that. Uh, next we have our council report, and we'll start with Councilman Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, for my council report, I just wanted to let the, uh, citizens know that Darien is trying to move forward and, uh, we want to thank Mr. Archie Davis for the fine job he's doing, filling that position. It's a tough position, um, but he's doing an excellent job. Um, I want to thank the police for the fine job they're doing in keeping all the citizens safe. And I'm hoping everyone has a fantastic Fourth of July and, uh, stay safe and enjoy your family and friends, um, and follow means during the Fourth of Ju- July. Please remember those that gave you the right to, to have the freedoms that you had, or you choose to celebrate it. If you drink, please don't get behind the wheel. Um, and just enjoy your family, enjoy your friends, and keep safe and follow means as hard as it's been already be, he's smart, because I think that the worst is yet to come as far as he did. And, um, I think that's pretty much complete my report, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would ask the city manager if he would make sure that those last three candidates get to, um, Ms. Kathleen Russell, who's in the Darien News of the Freedom of Information Act, and make sure she gets copied and delivered, appreciate that. Make sure she gets a copy of the Declaration of Rights. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Senator.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Skeen?
Well, you know, this is what, March? It's my third month here. I, um, been through a lot with the, uh, with the appointment of our judge, our attorney and our city manager. You know, no matter how the negotiation goes with Mr. Christian, it still will take a good while for him to come on board. We're in good hands with Archie. I know, um, you know, he's, he's probably ready to get rid of us. But, uh, you know, um, I want to personally thank you for for being here for us and being here for me and helping me because it, it is a tremendous, tremendous, what you have done. And, uh, with that said, I, I, I will conclude with this. Um, you know, the city, the Keep Macintosh Beautiful is a, it's a great organization and I know they need people and, um, so I hope that, uh, I hope this is a step where the city and, um, can work together with Keep Macintosh Beautiful. And I appreciate your awesome time. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Just want to do this comment on Council Cox, um, concerning us moving forward as we have had so many things before us and it's time to look around at something else being presented, but we as a council will learn how to, know how to deal with it. And it's time, you know, that things get in place and stay in place and I'm, I'm a firm believer that if we work together and keep unity and be on my court, then we can make it happen. And then there will have to be no surprise, things put before us, but, um, I also want to just ask the citizens to be careful during the Fourth of July because, um, there's a lot of dangerous fireworks out there, so be careful. You know, the areas that you go into lightning and stuff like that, just be careful watching your children. And, um, and I'd like to, with this Julie, over at Keep Macintosh Beautiful, the new program, the abandoned building program, that's gonna help us clean up our area. And because Julie, when you come in or you look on the map from another state or anything, someone just want to view this place, uh, come and visit or take a tour, they want to see something exciting, like, um, Ms. Hall says, some beautiful vacation, something that pops, so we're gonna try to work with her with that. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Lawton?
I want to join the colleagues that complimented, uh, Mr. Archie Davis for history's sake. I was in the attorney's office and I was the first person to talk with Archie to get officially what he considered and check it out with your boss. As I often do, I have spoke with a very fine mayor and the mayor was on board. And Archie came in as he does in his professional life as a special forces in the military. He actually shocked me. I did not know he was gonna be that good in acting city manager position. He came in and, uh, and I can say this, he consulted with every council person a lot before he made any major decision. Careful what I'm saying, because I don't want to get in trouble, but he, wow. Anytime Mr. Lawton, he respected me, he's bigger than I am. Certainly didn't beat me. I'm a little afraid of him, to be honest. Because my son is in some kind of special force unit and I'm scared of him too, because he's twice my size now. But, uh, so the public, if you don't know, Mr. Archie Davis, uh, pillar of this community for three or four generations. Your grandfather would be proud. He just didn't get the job and played around. I was surprised he worked so hard because he didn't have to. And he only took, I can say it publicly now, he didn't come in this job to get rich. I can say that. Public don't know that. I won't say it sadly, but he, wow, I would have asked for more. He, he came to serve. And I had opportunity to meet his wife, she worked with the, uh, the runners that came from around the world. And I want to commend you in this one moment, I have a few other reminders, we can give him a great big round of applause because he helped us out during some very rough time. Everybody had counted us out. So, Mr. Archie Davis. And it's close, y'all don't stand on this one because this is very important. Most people do not know this. Uh, the mayor, who really thought he was going to jail, he received a phone call. He really did and was scary about indictment of two mayors. And I was similar to that one time myself and they left him a phone call and he had to suffer the whole weekend. Because he is a mayor and they were talking about indictment of the mayor. And, uh, who it was, it was the governor himself. And the governor spoke with him and wanted him to be on this special committee because two mayors in the state of Georgia got in a little bit of trouble. And our mayor of the city of Darien was selected by the governor in that position and before that, Solomon Water Conservation Special Board for, uh, the area, the governor appointed him to that also some time ago. He doesn't talk a lot about it, but I know some of the things he does, because I usually stand in for him sometime, uh, but he can't make meetings. So, from the governor of the state of Georgia, uh, we want to present these very passively, special badge also. And this is presented to him, this is a real special one, we do that, do a special one last. This one is from the University of Georgia and the Georgia Municipal Association. Hereby certified the Hugh Bubba Hart and the special Robert E. Knox Jr. Municipal Leadership Institution, March twenty-ninth, April first, two thousand sixty. Hold your horses. From the governor, the head of municipal association. Very hard for what he's been doing, not just for Darien, but this county, but for the entire state of Georgia. The University of Georgia is, is given to him by the Georgia Municipal Association, the Hugh Bubba Hart. And this is a very special, uh, award here. This is the certificate of excellence. They just don't give you this, you have to earn. The mayor of our city now has went to more training from to the University of Georgia than any mayor in the history of the city of Darien, Georgia. We go back to seventeen thirty-six. And, uh, so I want to say that because he definitely goes and gets the training and he brings it back. And he believes in the city, he loves the city, and I know he loves the city because he's there at night. I know when he's troubled sometimes, he shares things with you, but he put his heart into the city. And he may not get everything that he wants, but his heart is in the city and the governor saw something in him. So let's just give Mayor Hugh Bubba Hart your hand.
I haven't even got, uh, I want to have him pick it up, I appreciate it, and I think he picked it up.
They called his name and I walked up like I was a bear.
He sure did.
He sure did.
He sure did.
Okay, is that your?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. I'll keep mine kind of brief and I'll say that and get into it. First off, I want to say, uh, congratulations to my wife. She, uh, just achieved thirty years of our wedding anniversary with me, so, uh, thirty years, but, uh, thank you for that. But anyway, uh, I got a couple of things that kind of bother me. First off, I'm gonna go tag along with what, uh, Councilman Cox said, do you buy? If you're gonna drink on the drive, I lost a brother and a sister too. Do you buy, sister on bicycle, brother on motorcycle? And it don't just affect the victim, it affects the family. That was over thirty-five, forty years ago and it still bothers me today. Another thing is, uh, we didn't have a summer food program this year. You know, there's some children in our counties and I said, say it's part of the county, but that's the only meal they get, because that's cool for that summer one. So I think that the city needs to take it on our own to make sure, whatever we have to do next year, we need to partner up with whoever it is and make sure these kids get some kind of meal during the summer because, you know, when we sit back and eat stuff, there's a lot of good things. Uh, the other thing is, we thank everybody. I, I want to thank everybody. I thank our street crew, it's doing great. I thank our police department, our city manager. You know, one, one group that gets left out of it is Georgia Power. You know, a couple of weeks ago, we had a major outage and that was a nine-to-four hour retreat. I know we had the, the chamber dinner and also I was trying to go to the drinking and I'd come back and try to help, but with the lock, no, couldn't do anything, but I was here just in case, back and forth, but, uh, we need to thank Georgia Power a couple. We have an outage and there's other co-ops out in the county as well, but Georgia Power does a great job of jumping on it. They don't say, well, soon as the rain is over, I'll, I'll be there. They come on out then and they know they're taking their life in hands because of the flim electricity, just like our law enforcement takes their life in hands when they stop the car because they never know. So we want to thank them. Also, I want to, on a happy note, I'm gonna end out that our Westside Park, and I'm gonna start referring to it as our Veteran Memorial Park, because I've been around it to other counties and states and everybody has something to represent or show appreciation to their veterans. We didn't have anything, so I'm glad to say at our town hall meeting, everybody was in agreement with what's gonna be called a Veteran Memorial Park. We got it laid out and I want to thank the street crew and the coworkers and everything for keeping the grass cut and everything leveled out, keeping it ready for the playground equipment now. And we are in the final stage of having our groundbreaking ready to start up or our first phase of equipment ordered and put out there. And that's my, Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
Uh, we did the surplus with all the items and the biz up and we sold everything and we made eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven.
That's very good.
That's yours?
That's it.
We appreciate it. You know, that's one thing I want to point out, we keep saying that that, uh, Mr. Davis is doing a great job and I think I can go out legally now and say it, uh, he showed us where we saved over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in just a couple of things and all that we shouldn't have been saving all along when he came in. And people tell me that they're super out, they can go to the city hall and somebody there will speak to them. He's in the office, he's ready to speak to them, so I do want to thank you for that and everything, especially for the, all the money you've helped the CDC and, uh, City Attorney, go ahead.
Just very briefly, in July, I suspect we'll have some ordinances that I'll get to the city manager for our consideration. They'll primarily be because of legislation that was passed by the legislature. Uh, we've got some minor changes to our municipal court, general ordinances that were required to do by state law now. We've just got a, we're actually pretty close to what state law is now. We were sort of ahead of the times in our process. I, I'll get those that were mandated by state law, uh, I suspect will be worth two per.
One other thing I want to do, I didn't want to do it there in my speech, is, uh, we do have a couple of other council members that need to be recognized. University of Georgia also presented to Griffin Lotz and such for the certificate of achievement.
That's certificate of training?
The second level, now the training, so. And so, so we want to, uh, thank him for that. That was a lot of time that he has given up, so his, uh, training. Also, we have one, Ms. Barbara Shaw, uh, went with me and done the, uh, the University of Georgia, the Robert E. Knox Jr. Municipal Leadership Institution. This one was three days that she had to go away and do so on. I thank her for that. Okay, we do have an executive session. Okay, sir.
My motion, we turn it out. My motion go to executive session.
Go to executive, go to chair.
Yep, I got it.
Make a motion to go to executive session.
Yes, do you want a second?
Do the debate.
Oh, I'll do it.
Second.
Okay. We're on it. Executive session, y'all, hand it around. Motion, we come out of the second session, I hear a second. Do I hear a second? We come out of the second session?
I have a second.
I have a second. Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. If we come out of the second session. Oppose, here. Okay. We have a list of names that was turned in with modifications and things uh, for the DDA board, that being Philip Kempton, Johnny South, Andy Grimstead, Mike Greenway, Fred Strugel, Russ Quarterman, Kyle Hollins, Ron Zbier and Councilor Lady Barbara Shaw. Do I hear a motion? Have we approved this?
I make the motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Skeen. Do I hear a second?
Sir.
I have a second from Councilman Cox. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Um, could I just ask if, um, attorney, could you explain, um, the reasons in the, the parameter for the decision?
You got it.
That's right.
And that is by the state, right?
That's right. This is state law. It's not, uh, a local ordinance or it's not one of our charter provisions. State law only allows one member of the, uh, board to live outside of the county. So that's why we had to make some small adjustments to the revenue of this.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same. Carry, thank you. That's, anybody have anything else? You have anything else? I hear a motion, we adjourn.
Make a motion, Mr. Mayor, we adjourn.
Second.